We are?
Yeah.
Where are you, where are you going?
Holiday construction building right next to it.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Is that you?
That's who I work for, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
You can't just offer it once in a while.
You're going here.
Hey, Dave. We had, uh, we had, oh, my sister. She's gotta be laying out this summer. A whole month, we had three days in Chester. But, but, once we got to.
We'll listen to me.
They were even a little bit before us.
Hank?
First time and I never had to put pants on.
Hey, Steve.
You know, so it was.
Chuck's, Chuck's still, I think, down in Arizona.
Yeah, you didn't tell me. He said he was gonna be back.
Yeah, where's Hank?
I hate you all.
How you doing? Oh, great.
Well, we have old kids are hunting.
Yeah. Okay, Steve, we're gonna.
That's where we always go.
We're gonna start tonight with, uh, the public hearing. Steve, you wanna read the notice?
I would be happy to. Notice is hereby given that the plant commission will consider the granting of a conditional use permit for a home occupation business with visitors for parcel number one four zero nine, one thousand McFarlane Road, four-page, Pistina. A public hearing will be held in the city council chambers in the city of Portage Municipal Building, one fifteen West Pleasant Street, Portage, Wisconsin, at six twenty-five P M. On Monday, March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, to grant the subject property a conditional use permit to allow a home occupation business with visitors. The property is zoned R-three, single and two-family residential. All interested persons may appear in person or by their attorney or agent for the purposes of offering such proof and support of their position opposing or endorsing the granting of this conditional use permit for said property dated February eleventh, twenty twenty-five. Stephen Sobiak, Director of Business Development and Planning.
Thank you, Mr. Sobiak. If there's anybody that'd like to speak regarding this matter, please step up to the microphone and state your name and your address, please.
I'm Cody Frederick. Um, I am the owner or co-owner of the one thousand McFarlane residence. Um, I'm stepping up to, um, show my support for the potential bakery and give a little bit of a background as to why we support this. Um, our goal behind this entity is to provide high-quality baked goods for our community using fresh ingredients and minimizing preservatives and additives. Um, my wife has, as a stay-at-home mom the past, um, seven years now, five to seven years now, um, has spent a lot of time, you know, prepping, making things with, like I said, fresh ingredients, um, trying to just overall improve the quality of the food that, um, our children are eating. Um, and with both children now in full-time school, we have the opportunity, um, and the ability to provide a, um, service to the community in the form of a cottage, cottage food bakery. So with the, um, the intent behind the business is mostly for it to be an online, um, sort of setup. So people would be putting in orders online and we would have maybe a one- or two-day pickup during the week. Um, this pickup would be essentially, we're trying to have it contactless. So people would pick up, put it in order at the beginning of the week. We would have them pick a time to come to our house. It might be in Portage, um, a Thursday or Thursday, Friday, or Saturday. The order would be sitting essentially on our porch, ready for them to pick up and take. Um, the transactions, uh, we're trying to push maybe all online. So we wouldn't even have to necessarily, you know, speak with a customer face-to-face. Um, not that that's what we're necessarily angling for or trying to avoid.
Just trying to make it as easy as possible.
Inconvenient.
Yeah.
Um, as far as where our location is, we thought it would be a really good location. Um, we are on, off of the skate park splash pad area. Um, it's a, a one-way that already has, I'd say, a pretty fair, steady amount of traffic. We're not expecting huge amounts of interrupted traffic flow based on the, you know, three to four people over the course of, well, yeah, so over the course of the pickup window. So each day we're anticipating maybe three or four people over the course of three hours stopping in, grabbing their stuff off of our porch and heading out. We also are looking to get more, you know, into the community by participating in the farmer's market. Also be an area where we would be present. Um, yep, I believe that's pretty much the kind of high-level summary of the business without going into the fine details. Um, I guess one other important, um, item I did want to draw attention to is that my wife is before, before becoming a stay-at-home mom, um, she went to, at the time, M A T C Madison Culinary Arts School. Um, and before, again, before becoming a stay-at-home mom, had worked her way up to, um, the title of Chef de Cuisine at Liliana's Restaurant in Fitchburg, which at the time was a semi-fine dining restaurant. Kind of pre-COVID, every, after that, everything kind of got shook up. Um, but yes, with that, at, at the culinary arts program, obviously, she learned, you know, safe food handling, um, all of that sort of background knowledge, uh, food safe prep, all of that stuff as well. I think that's, that.
Go ahead.
Oh, well, I'm Paige. I'm gonna be the baker. Um, but yeah, I just plan on using my, um, previous skills as a chef to now utilize the cottage food laws in having a home bakery. So I can use my experience that I learned then. And yeah, I applied to be in the farmer's market. Be attended, used to attend the farmer's market a lot, so familiar with that. And I think it would just be a good way to supplement our income, doing something that I love.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
If there's anyone else that would like to speak regarding this matter, please step up to the microphone and state your name and your address, please. Hearing none, we'll move on to the regular meeting for the night. I'll call the meeting to order. Uh, Steve, will you call the roll, please?
Craig.
Here.
Gunderson.
Here.
Knackreiner.
Here.
Paul.
Here.
Snyder. Sulik and Egan are excused. We have a court, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Before we get started tonight, I'd like to, I know there's a lot of people here from Grove Street. So I just wanna let everybody understand some things. That we had a meeting with, uh, the developers who are, have a concept idea of what they would like to do on Albert Street. Uh, we encouraged them to go over and talk to the people on Grove Street 'cause we're trying to be totally transparent about everything that's gonna transpire. The only thing that's gonna be happening tonight is just a, a discussion on what they would like to do. Um, there's a long ways to go before this project could move forward with rezoning, uh, public hearings, uh, traffic flow studies. I mean, so there's gonna be lots and lots of opportunities for people to come back and make comments. So there's gonna be nothing decided on Grove Street tonight. So I can rest everybody assured that nothing, no decisions will be made tonight. And then we do have a couple of public comments. I don't know if everybody turned their, in their form that wanted to speak tonight. But the first one I have is Amanda. Yep, there we go. So if you would just step up to the microphone and state your name and your address, please.
Amanda Steinle, six-two-eight Grove Street. City officials, I am here today to tell you about the many concerns I have with rezoning of the commercial property on Albert Street behind Grove Street. I wanna start by introducing myself. I'm Amanda Steinle. My husband and I purchased the model home on Grove Street in two thousand and one. We have raised our now adult children on Grove Street. They both have graduated from Portage High School and my boys both work in Portage. My dad's starting, started an accounting and tax preparation business, Thompson Accounting, over thirty years ago in Portage, and I have worked there as long as I can remember. I became partner thirteen years ago with my dad and recently purchased our downtown building from him. Our accounting and tax business consists of many business owners in Portage. My husband is a sheriff's deputy for Columbia County. He has coached for over fifteen years in either baseball and/or football from youth levels all the way through varsity levels in Portage. We both have been on Portage football boards for many, many years. It's an understatement to say that we've been involved making Portage the best that we possibly can. I have strong ties to this great city and want nothing but the success for Portage. I have been asked today by numerous people to address our concerns to the board. Many cannot be here tonight as they are gone for work or gone vacationing for spring break. A good handful sent emails to Steve even after we emailed, and I'm asking you to forward those additional emails to the board. Now, how I came to be talking today. Do you wanna say something?
No.
Oh, I thought you were hesitating.
No, I'm just listening. Sorry about that.
Okay. Todd Nelson came around Sunday, March ninth, and knocked on our door. He introduced himself and told us plans of an eighty-four-unit, three-story apartment complex. When I asked him who the developer was more than one time, he wouldn't give me a straight answer. He just said that questions all needed to go through him. He's, um, we also asked him who the landowner was. He informed us, he informed us he was the landowner and he owned the, the land outright. Not sure what that had to do with anything. We did a property tax search and the landowner, according to the property tax site, is William Clemmons. This is not a good start to the process of developing a relationship with landowners around a new development site. My question is, who is Todd Nelson? Who's the developer? Who is William Clemmons? And how are they all tied together? Here are some of our concerns about putting the eighty-four-unit, three-story apartment complex in the wrong place for Portage. Number one is parking. They have parking lots on the plans, but how many parking stalls? I would guess there would be anywhere from a hundred and fifty to two hundred-plus cars a day going in and out of that building. Is either renters, significant others, friends? What about family gatherings on holidays? Manchester Place in Portage is a prime example of parking problems. My grandma lived there and when, when we would have family gatherings, we would have to park on the road. Probably not legally. Albert Street definitely cannot be parked on. So where is this overflow going? Number two is Albert Street itself. How is Albert Street gonna handle these additional hundred and fifty to two hundred-plus cars a day coming in and out? During certain times of day, like school traffic, it's not easy to navigate Hamilton Street to Albert Street. How is this gonna be handled? How are the businesses on Albert Street going to handle the extra traffic? Who's gonna pay for the curb and gutter that would need to be put in to keep these roads up? There is a new development going around Mud Lake, so that's gonna automatically increase the traffic on Albert Street as well. There is no room for widening that roads to accommodate this. There needs to be a traffic study and a safety study done with both the police department and/or the sheriff's department. Who's gonna pay for this study? Number three is water runoff. This property is incredibly wet, especially at the end closest to the marsh. The builder would need to bring in a lot of fill dirt to make this, the site buildable. Where is the water gonna go after the land is?
Just wanted to let you know you still, you have thirty seconds left. You're only allowed, you're only allowed to speak, you're only allowed to speak for five minutes.
Okay, well, if you can just forward my other concerns, I have got.
We would be happy to.
Eight or nine. I just wanna end it with this. I wanna see what's best for Portage. My business's livelihood depends on it. This property is not the right place for any apartment complex. There's better places in Portage already zoned for the apartment complexes that would not have the same issues that Albert Street will. Thank you.
And please make sure that you get that to Steve 'cause we'll be happy to forward. Yep, we'll forward it all on to everyone. Next, uh, Taylor. Please, if you would state your name and your address, please.
Hi, I'm Taylor Winkie. I live on six thirty-two Grove Street, right next to Amanda. Um, so I wanna talk about the traffic. So when there was, P was shut down or something last summer. So they had to go around, right, on thirty-three. The traffic behind there was horrible. So if we just add this apartment complex, I feel like, put that into perspective, it was a nightmare. Um, especially for all the people that lived, you know, and had to accommodate that. Um, so I'm gonna continue this. Um, we're talking about water runoff. This property is incredibly wet, especially on the end closest to the marsh. A builder would need a lot of fill dirt brought in to make the site buildable. Where is all that water going to go after the land is raised from the fill dirt? They have very little green space to their plans. How are existing homes going to be protected from this water? How are they handling snow plowing and where is the snow getting pushed to? What happens when the snow melts? I know many of us Grove Street have lawns that get extremely wet with standing water. What's going to stop the additional water from going into our basements? A water study must be done. Who is going to pay for that? Four, the protected wetlands. There is a protected wetland on the side of the property. The D N R needs to get involved with the study to make sure there, this isn't going to affect the protected property. Again, with water runoff, like previously mentioned, this is going to be a problem in protected wetlands. How is this going to affect the wildlife? And let me tell you, we have a ton back there. There is a lot of deer, animals, and I like my squirrels back there. Okay, five, rezoning. We all purchased our properties knowing it was zoned commercially and we were okay with that. Mike O'Brien, owner of O'Brien Agency located on Albert Street, looked into possibly moving his other business, Design One, to the Albert Street property. I have also thought about moving my business there. With the price tag of six hundred thousand, it was not cost-efficient. With that said, there is interest for commercial property. It just needs to be the right price for the right buyer. It's really unfair for the city to rezone things as they see fit. Please represent all of Portage when it comes to considering this. Home value. If an apartment complex goes in, it will lower all the home values on Grove Street. Grove Street alone has a property tax assessment of six point eight million dollars with a hundred thirty-five thousand in property taxes paid just in twenty twenty-four. Who wants to buy a home when all they see in their backyard is a three-story high building? Who is going to pay for the decrease in our value of our homes? What can the developer do to help with the new eyesore? Seven, fire department. How is the fire department getting their trucks around two buildings that are very tight? The fire department needs to be involved in this project as well. With the estimated hundred fifty to two hundred people at a given time in this five-point-six acre spot, there will be fire calls there as well as police calls. This is too small of a property for that many people. Empty building. When Mr. Nelson came around grocery, he said he was going to get fourteen hundred for a single-room apartment. The average rent in Portage is nine hundred fifty dollars a month, and that is for all bedroom levels. Over fifty percent of Portage School is on free or reduced lunch. Portage does need affordable housing, just not that high of a price. What happens if this building is sit, what if this building sits empty? There should be a study done on if the prices can even be sustained in Portage. And Portage prices are not Dane County prices. Who is going to pay for that? So with that being said, we do want what's best for the city. There does need to be more housing, affordable housing. However, we do not agree with it being behind our property on Albert Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, uh, we have. Uh, I'm not sure how to. A D N A R N A S I E R R A. There we go. That's you. You just state your name and your address, please.
My name is Adriana Sierra. I live on six four zero Grove Street. Um, we had purchased our house a year ago, end of this month. And so, uh, there's a lot of factors that we looked into consideration when staying in Portage because we also did outside of Portage. We used to live on a really high, busy road. We have two teenage boys that love to be outside, um, especially my son. He bikes everywhere now. So when we were looking at homes, this one I love because not only is it on a cul-de-sac where it's much safer, but it's not as busy as the roads we used to live on. But if we're gonna be adding a complex there, now we are adding more vehicles that are gonna go on Hamilton where a lot of the kids and dog walkers wind up walking. So you're adding more traffic, possibly more accidents. And that's not something that we took into consideration when looking for homes. Our kids love being outside and if we're gonna add all of this other pedestrians, traffics, everything like that, I, it just sucks, to, to put it lightly. Um, and I definitely wouldn't have bought that home if I knew this was something that's gonna be developed. And from what you had said earlier, it sounds like this is already in the process. This is pretty much going to happen. It's just the length of time and other concerns.
I, I did not say that this was gonna happen. I said, we're just, they asked us, we asked them to come and talk to you folks and this is just their concept plan, which means this is stage one. Which means there has to be all those studies that they already, the lady talked about, all those have to be done. It has to go in front of the zoning committee, which has to rezone it, which is a big hurdle. And then the, and then the plant commission has to come back, have another public hearing and have, has to approve the plans that are presented. So there's, this has not been decided in any way, shape, or manner. What's gonna happen with this piece of property? This has a long ways to go with a lot of public input yet to come. So please don't say that this has already been decided 'cause it has not been decided.
Just the way that you had worded it in the beginning sounded like it was, this was already in the works. So that's, okay. Um, but with that also being said, it does, what they had said does look into our home value. I mean, we, with the way that the rates are going now, the values of the home that they are now, things are very unpredictable and we would love to keep the value as it is where it is now. And I guess I'm not really understanding what market value is. Um, from my small, um, knowledge of it, I thought that'd be like section eight housing, kind of low income. Um, that'd be workforce housing? Okay. Gotcha. Okay. Um, but if you look at other community Facebook pages, there are a lot of people who are asking for two-bedroom homes, but they're only able to afford less than a thousand dollars. So if you're looking at market rate for one thousand four hundred for a two-bedroom home and you're wanting to get more people in Portage, there's a lot of people out there already that are saying they can't afford that type of house or apartment for them and one other person or them and a family. So that rate as well is just also concerning. Um, so those are just my, my thoughts.
Thank you. Then we have Ruth Perkins. Ruth, if you'd just state your name and your address, please.
Ruth Perkins, five oh eight East Conan Street, Portage, Wisconsin, five three nine oh one. And thanks for this opportunity. Um, I have had my yard zoned twice. There's no difference in the zoning, but the main issue is that there's an encroachment of a garage on my boundary in the back. And, um, I would like to just roll that land into Richard Lynn's property so I can move on and sell my house because currently the purchasers of my home can't get a loan from the bank as long as that encroachment exists. So it's holding up the sale of my house, the purchase of my house in St. Paul where I'm from and wanna move back to. That's basically it. It's, it's not the border between Russia and Ukraine. We're talking about my backyard and Richard Lynn's backyard and a little tiny sixty feet with an edge of a garage on it. So I would like to move that land, if we can, over to Richard.
Just her realtor here for moral support.
Oh, okay.
Hold me up if I faint.
No, you did fight, Ruth.
Can I sell the house?
Uh, well, we'll get to that on the agenda.
Okay, 'cause my closing is Monday.
This is, uh, just.
A week from today.
This is just under public comment, so we'll get to that. And, and if you have, if we have other further questions, we will be able to ask you at that point.
Okay, 'cause the movers already rescheduled. Last month till now, five hundred and thirty-five dollars to reschedule. The people that I'm, where I'm buying in St. Paul want another seventeen hundred dollars to cover the H O A, the insurance, et cetera, there. I mean, delaying it another month is just putting, you know, three families on a business.
I understand.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
You bet.
I understand.
And the last one I have is from Amy Voight. Oh, okay. Okay, you didn't speak, so. All right, um, next we'll do the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. Thank you. Thank you, Dave. Any, uh, corrections? Steve, will you call the roll, please?
Uh, Craig.
Hi.
Gunderson.
Hi.
Knackreiner.
Hi.
Paul.
Hi.
Snyder. Motion carries.
Next we'll have a discussion and possible action, non-conditional use permit for a home occupation business with visitors for Paige. And I'm sorry about pronouncing your last name, which is.
It's Pistina.
Yep. Parcel number one four oh nine and one thousand McFarlane Road.
So as Paige indicated, Paige, uh, has submitted a conditional use permit application for parcel number one four zero nine, one thousand McFarlane Road to allow a home occupation business with visitors. Um, and as you heard at the public hearing, Ms. Pistina and her husband Cody are proposing a cottage bakery business in her home. Uh, so as you know, city code does allow a small home-based business to operate as a home occupation business as long as the business activity takes place entirely within the confines of the home and does not occupy more than twenty-five percent of the improved square footage of the home excluding the garage. Only business activity carried out by an immediate family member is allowed. Uh, no employees are allowed. Um, home occupation businesses with visitors require a conditional use permit, which is before you tonight. Uh, this parcel is zoned R-three, single and two-family residential. By city code, I, as the zoning administrator, must make a recommendation based on, uh, number of criteria. Uh, number one, the conditional use is in harmony with the recommendation. Number one, the conditional use is in harmony with the recommendation of the comprehensive plan. Number two, this conditional use will not result in any adverse impact on nearby property, the character of the neighborhood environment, parking, public improvement, public property, or other matters affecting public health, safety, or the general welfare as it exists now or may in the future. Number three, the conditional use will maintain the desired consistency of land uses and development related to the environs and the conditional use is located in an area that will be adequately served by public improvements and utilities, et cetera. So there's really no negative impact. City staff, including the technical review committee, has reviewed this application at length and unanimously recommends to the plant commission that the applicant's conditional use application be approved.
Dennis.
Steve, I assume that everybody's been notified that's...
Yes. By state law, every landowner within 300 feet of the applicant's address. So we received absolutely no comment one way or the other before this public hearing. So nobody came forth opposing this conditional use.
And with that said, I've always felt this way about a conditional use. People around it support it or don't not support it? That has an impact on me, you know? Because this isn't going to affect me when I own it where I live, you know? So with that said, because we've had no negative comments tonight, Steve has got no negative... Truly support this.
Were you going to make a motion then?
I can.
Okay.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the conditional use. 1,000 McFarland for in-home bakery or cottage bakery, I guess is what you call it.
Yep. David. Thank you. Any further discussion, comments? Steve, will you call the roll?
Craig.
Hi.
Gunderson. Knackreiner.
Hi.
Paul.
Hi.
Schneider. Motion carries.
Good luck to you, folks. Next... Next, we'll have a presentation and discussion on concept plan for proposed multifamily development parcel 2442.102, East Albert Street.
So I... At this time, I'd like to invite developers Todd Nelson and Bill Clemmons up to present their 77-86 unit multifamily development. Todd and Bill, feel free to come up to the podium together, and we'll bring up the rendering of the proposed development. You can see this is a map of the parcel, which is not addressed. Parcel number 2442-102. Obviously, we know it's on East Albert Street. And you can see relative to Grove Street, relative to the comments we heard earlier today, which is adjacent to this property.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Oh, that's all right. And here we have the concept plan of the general layout. That's all right. That's fine. I have it. So without further ado, take it away, Bill.
What we're looking at is we're looking at a multifamily... Excuse me.
You are...
I'm Bill Clemmons. Bill Clemmons, sorry. And...
You are the current owner of the property?
Yes, have been for, I guess, it's been 17 years. I used to own a lot of senior housing in Portage, and I actually owned Edelweiss Gardens next to it. And I bought all that property at the same time. So I was on Albert Street for quite a few years there. This goes back a while. So we looked at that... We looked at the project. We know it's zoned, a commercial zoning. And we looked at different stuff that way. But we actually were looking at stepping backwards with that, because I thought, you know, residential housing might be better there than something commercial, you know? Trucks, a lot of employees and stuff, which it is zoned for that. And that's something that we know we could come in and do. So we looked at stepping it back. And our development project is actually... It's actually a five-star energy project. So it meets some real cool energy codes. It's super efficient. That helps keep our pricing down on the rents in it. And it's actually upscale. It's not like... It's not like hobbled stuff. I mean, it's a very expensive project. The original plans were 20 million plus on the project. And then we... We actually... If you look in the plans there, you'll see that I had the original plan. We had looked at 108 units. We stepped that back because on the preliminary plan, the fire department wanted a cul-de-sac connection. And we said, "That's not..." We didn't feel that was going to work well for the, you know, the people that live there, to interrupt them up on a cul-de-sac. So we set our densities down to 86 to 87 on there, depending on the garage, utility garage. And the fire chief said that, "Yeah, we could... We could do this. We could eliminate the road for the cul-de-sac", which makes a big difference. It'd be a lot more privacy up on the cul-de-sac. So those are preliminary plans. We stepped those plans back. And this... This one you see up here is a secondary where we've reduced it. And this... That actually... I don't know if you can put one of the other ones up there, Steve?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Where it shows the buildings. We had two concepts for buildings.
Upside down, no.
There we go. Here's a 77 unit.
That's a 70... 77 unit, which is... There's multiple projects in there. Those have private doorway entrances, garages behind them. And then the rest of the surface parking would make up for the difference on there. And then if you go to the next plan, this is a concept plan. These are five-star energy buildings. They heat real reasonable. You know, this would have an elevator in it on three-story. Colors and that kind of stuff, you know? We try to make it as earthly as possible. We've had great success with these buildings from an energy standpoint. And they work. And today, it's really tough to build something and make it work because of the cost factors. But... And then there's a concept plan for that. You go down a little further. I think we show the... Oh, no. That's a... Yeah, you'd have to go further up towards the top.
There we go.
See the... See the layout for the plan? That'd be the independent units with the private entranceways. And then the building structure, that plan that if we go back way up, go up a little further, go up to that 108 unit. And we downsized it from there. We'll go a little more, Steve. Have to get up near the... I remember right. It's like on page three.
There you go.
Yeah. This... This one... This one would be the downsize. The color print... There's a color print on this too, but it shows the 108. Now, there are a lot of concerns about what about, you know? What about the water? What about the fire department? When you're doing a project like this, that's all part of it. It has to be approved. It's got to meet the code. It's got to meet state code. It's got to go through the councils. So we can't... You can't build something if you don't meet the water retention codes. If you don't, you know? If the development does not fit the zoning regulations, the city, you know, the city steps in and says, "We can't do this." So we're looking at a zoning change because I looked at it and I said, you know, yeah, we got houses around there. But also from a commercial standpoint, if we could have put a commercial business in there, there'd be a lot of traffic with that. So, you know, I looked at it and I said, that's why we downsized the project. I said, "We don't want to interrupt the people that are there across the street." So taking it down might be a better thing. But that's why we were notified. The city said that's notified. Yeah. So they were watching out for you. That's what this is all about. Obviously, you've got concerns. But your concerns about having to meet water retention, having to meet fire code, the city determines that. We can't do anything without the city approvals on it. So the rest of it is kind of, you know? What we can do is show you a project and say, "This is what we'd like to do." And if it gets voted down, then we're probably back to a commercial project. Because that's what we're going to have to do. So... I guess there's trade-offs. Something to think about, because we'll, you know? We'll develop it. Property, sometimes 20 years. I own senior housing. So if the property will get developed, it's just where you want to see it. Let's... I don't know if you've got questions or something?
I'm sure the plant...
I'm sure... I'm sure the plant commission does. Anybody? Yeah, Dennis.
I don't really have a question. And I'll start it out. The... In defense of Mr. Clemmons here. Did some investigating into him. His developments are very good. However, per state statute, every 10 years, the city has to do a comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan right now is fine. A comprehensive plan shows that property commercial development. People buy their homes and look at that the same way I do as a conditional use. Whether there's an apartment house there or a manufacturing plant there, it doesn't affect my house. One eye. So I go by... People that are affected by this. They brought their home. They said that was going to be commercial development. Matter is, if it was a commercial development, the right kind of commercial development, there doesn't even have to be a public hearing, because it doesn't need to be rezoned. You know, they would have really no say-so in that. But when it becomes an apartment house like this, they do have a say-so. And as we can see tonight, they're very concerned. An apartment house doesn't go in there. I have concerns about East Albert Street. You know, as far as can that handle that traffic out there? I have talked to our city engineer. He assures me that it can with some modifications. Albert Street was just repaved about four or five years ago.
Ah, two years ago, I believe.
East of Hamilton was 2022, and then the west of Hamilton portion over three years.
So can you put that extra traffic on there? Because East Albert Street is, we want to say it or not, it is a major thoroughfare in our state. No doubt about it. I own a business on East Albert Street, although it's on the part of East Albert that splits to Hurdle Street. And, you know, in today's world, our businesses would have never been able to be built because we were in the right of way. I'm going to tell you that everybody on East Albert Street, a lot of people on East Albert Street, when they come up on East Albert Street, they turn and they go by them businesses there because they want to avoid the stoplight. I don't know how many times there's been close calls. People backing out of my business that just about get hit because we're just too close to the road. But it is what it is. So don't tell me I got to build a new building. I mean, and... And we're going to... We're going to escalate that. That's going to get that much worse with that much traffic. And there's really nothing we can do about that. There's nothing we can say. Cars can't come in there anymore. But it's going to add that much traffic to East Albert Street that the city can't afford to have on. So rather than rattling on with that, I myself do not support... I'm... I'm all for more housing in the city of Portage. We have other places in the city of Portage that is available by to make that work, to put your property in the exact thing that you want to do of where you can go with it. It's just you don't own it at this point in time.
Yeah. And that's... That's part of when you develop...
That makes a big difference.
That changes the equity positioning.
But I don't want to say that I would be against the project. I'm against the location of the project.
Anyone else? Dave?
Question. You've got a 77 market rate plan and run rate.
Yeah.
Three-story.
Yes.
And 77 is two-story.
Single... Well, basically, two-story, yeah. Because there's mezzanines in them.
So... It'd be... Is this plan sort of like a hybrid of the two of them?
This is... This is a downsize plan. Steve, if you can go to the color rendition on the 108 unit, it'd be up at the front of the book.
It was way at the end, Steve.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
But it's... Yeah. Pretty small. Yeah.
Okay. We don't... We don't have it. Yeah. No.
So are these... This three-story and this two-story or...
These were both three-story units. We stepped this down to 86 units instead of 108. And this represents water retention. This was... This was a project we were looking at before COVID. And that kind of... So we've had a water retention. We had wetland delineation. So the land will qualify for building. It's just... So then the singles... Ground footprint runs, they would be approximately 22 foot tall. And this would run at about 36 foot high. And these people would be... And we'd get along with the elevation. You know, to that point, they're like, yes, off of this line. It's about 12 feet. And we'd hire them. That's where this... They're at the exact number.
So you...
You have made kind of a determination, however, these are going to be 77 or 80. Right. This... Yep. This would either be 86 like this or 77 the other way.
Right.
And the reason that, you know, to do it, you know, us along the way used to do this, somebody said, "We'll give two options out of here." Because, you know, we like the idea of how you do it all and stuff. When you're doing this, you got to make an actual decision. Do it in the middle of the quarter. So is that kind of your question? Yes.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments?
Yeah, Mr. Clemmons, you had mentioned the wetland delineation report. Can you address the audience as well?
Yeah. Yeah. In a project like this, when there's wetland close or it's lower land, or you have a stream or something coming through, you have to do what's called a wetland delineation. Somebody mentioned DNR. DNR is fully aware of what we've got here. Actually, the guy that used to do my wetland delineations is no longer with us. But this was done... This one in particular was done, I think, the first one. James Noel, J.D. Knowles and Associates. He wrote the program for the Army Corps. Quite a bit of development in wetland area. He wrote the book for it. So what he put on his delineation is accurate. And I've got a firm that's going to... We get preliminary approvals, bring in the sand. They're only good for five years. So that's part of where your regulations come in. Can you build in it? You know, this is... An abitable stream on it, something like that, then you... What we showed on that delineation, the project with 108, will fit on there. What we show on the plan would fit on that. 4.2 acres of building. And there's a lot of dry land there. Because what's happened now in the last few years of what 100-year water water holding ability, it went to 200 years. You have any questions? Ask me. Our engine, if we get further along with this, our engineers will be coming along and giving it all the guidance.
If the... If the people in attendance want to ask you questions, it'll have to be after the meeting.
Oh, okay. Yep, right.
And in addition to that wetland delineation, the city does have a pretty extensive stormwater ordinance that the developer would have to adhere by. As the developer indicated, if they decide to move forward with the next steps in this process, it would be bringing an engineering firm, staff with them, to present a stormwater. My city staff, possibly some of our consultants.
We've our, our water runoff ordinances are even a little bit stricter than what the state requires.
In some cases, yes.
And if I could add, a number of steps will need to be taken. This has actually not even been submitted. So, this is, again, these are concept plans. I'd encourage the plan commission to share your comments, if you haven't already, with the developers, suggestions, opinions. But again, there has to be either a site plan submittal, or a PUD, a plan unit development, depending, the, the densest that this apartment can be is sixteen units per acre. And that's based on our largest zoning designation for multifamily, that's R5. If that exceeds that, then it will need to go through the plan unit development, which means it also has to go to the city council. A site plan just has to be approved by the plan commission. But over and above that, this has to be rezoned. As was indicated previously, this is owned before general business. So, it will have to go through the process of rezoning to R5. And that will also have a public hearing. There will be many kicks at the cat for all of these processes. So, it's going to be several months along with this. So, this, again, we encouraged, as the mayor indicated, that the developers engage the community, particularly the Grove Street residents. And so, that's been done. And so, in many respects, this process has just begun tonight.
Yes, Dennis?
Just one other comment is, the correspondence we received from you, Steve, is also, they want to set up a TID district for this?
Yes.
That, that property, that area is not in a TID district as I speak.
Right, it has to be amended. It won't be approved until the end of this year.
Well, that's a whole other level and layer.
That's a whole other can of worms that has to be opened up here. And then one other comment to Mrs. Steinley, that is not Mud Lake. I own property that abuts that, that's our lakefront property, that's Duck Lake.
It got changed, yeah, yeah. It got, it got, it got changed to Duck Lake.
It's Duck Lake.
Because that's, uh, that's what it originally was, way back in the eighteen hundreds or something, it was named Duck Lake.
If I go to sell that property, it's going to sound a lot better Duck Lake than it does Mud Lake.
Yeah, Matt.
Well, if, TIF, TID, if it's, I, we know it's, it's in a district of eleven. We said if it could be brought in, that helps. You know, when you're, when you're talking the amount with the building costs nowadays, and we know they're going to be inflating more yet, you've got to make the project better. Anything we can get, anything we can get out of it. Well, the, the commercial, we looked at that. We looked at some different stuff. So, I really don't have anything on it because I thought this might be a better project. I've done a lot of senior housing, done a lot of apartment complexes. So, that's where I thought we would give it a start. Yes, I can show, I've got other stuff, I'll show you. Yeah, I'll, I'll grab some.
Yeah, as Dennis said, he researched them, and, and they, as, as the city has, and they do do very quality work. I, I will, I will give them that.
Yeah, I've got, I've got approved projects in there, I got some flyers, I'll show you. So, the, we've been, my partners on this, Donna's been, he used to, he helped build Extreme Panel. And he's got thirty years in SIP construction. Five-star energy rating. He's a meat-five-star energy rating. That's one of the reasons I got back in, I was kind of semi-retired, and he said, we need your help. And I said, okay, I got three projects, my own, we're going to get done. Because we've got one proposed for Sun Prairie also. I've got land in Sun Prairie, and then I've got land in Montana. I'll bring you over some flyers, and if you want to check it, you got any questions on our credibility?
No, not credibility, but this is from, from the project, how they're doing. How they do construction, it's for modular, the projects always available.
Well, and, you know what? I, I've been doing this a long time, so I get that, but I'm, I'm sold on it. And we've got the president of the SIP Association on board. I'll show some, show you some stuff. I think you, I think you'll be impressed, because that's why I kind of came back on board. Little older, Don's a little younger, he says we could sure use your help. And I said, okay, if I'm going to help you, then we're going to get these projects done here where I, you know, I want to get mine done, get them finished up. I'll bring you some stuff over.
Yep.
On the density of sixteen units, is, wetlands qualify in that?
Uh, generally speaking, no. It depends on what is listed as part of the site plan. I mean, we could, that's a staff interpretation. That's included in the site. I am anticipating that that's going to be included as parkland. So, that probably could be included. Yeah.
Well, the, the fire chief wanted that, if we did that project. Right. We met with, we met with everybody.
Does anybody else have any other questions?
Mayor, are we going to kind of take a, I'm going to take no action tonight, but I think we need to give him a direction.
We do. The only thing is that, and, and I think that you folks should, I, I will not decide because, I mean, I'm only the mayor for another month, so I don't think it'd be appropriate for me to get involved and, and say how I feel about this project one way or another. I think that's up to whoever's the next mayor to make that decision, to move this project along or not move it along. So, I do, would like to ask each member, whether they would support this, or whether they wouldn't. But I'll, I'll just abstain from giving my opinion on it. So, we'll start with you, Dennis.
I'm not supporting. I support your project, I don't support the location.
David?
I think at the current site, I would support something. A couple people, is it the most? Putting on the Grove Street area, I think a three-story.
What do you think about the lower level, that type of?
I mean, you're getting closer, but I still don't know.
We have, we have to do a certain amount in order to make it work financially.
I understand. Something that large in that part of town, probably not something I'm going to be on board.
So, if we entertain like a gated community or something? Yeah. About four, two buildings.
As the project is right now, it's-
Matt?
Is the, always a double X word, because shooting something down like this, something much more, people don't take it up absolutely. Commercial property that I think, I agree, but I think it's too much for the site plan. And, 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 um, let our view of, 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 um, knowing that it's not that much, of course, that it's a area.
Yep.
It's going to have to stay.
David?
I'm, uh, I think the project could possibly work at a lower density. I have realized that it's all about knowledge and passion.
Yep, yep.
I understand that. But, the three-story, I would say, is out of place in the, in the neighborhood. And, uh, I, I, two-story would be somewhat better, but, but still clearly, um, that keeps an old mind. But, I, I think that, that, three-story, um, is, um, um-
I'm going to let Matt Finney speak, he's actually one of the candidates for the next mayor of the city of Portage. So, I asked him if he would like to address this situation, so I'll let Matt speak.
I'll kind of echo what the other parts of the plan commission have said, is that I know that there's a proposal for other apartments further down along Albert Street. And I know that because there's going to be a downtown highway project with the state, we're going to detour a lot of stuff this summer on Albert already. So, there's going to be a huge amount of traffic on Albert this summer, with some more apartments further down. So, at some point, we have to look at the volume of traffic. And so, again, I'll keep an open mind, but as of right now, seventy-seven or eighty-six units does seem to be a lot of traffic. I know that when my wife or I, we come down Albert Street trying to make a left-hand turn at certain types of the day, there's a backup of fifteen, twenty cars there. And if you add more, so, again, something like what David said about, you know, fourplexes, or maybe, you know, even like senior row houses or townhomes or something, might work. I'm a little skeptical that something this dense would work.
Can I make one more comment?
You sure can, Dennis.
Just keep in mind that the city's long-range plan, this was commercial property. It was not duplex property, it was not apartment property, it was for commercial use. The city, when they adopt their comprehensive plan, has to have a public hearing. And that's the time that people have to come in, and if they don't agree with what we're adopting, that they speak up. To the best of my knowledge, there was, nobody ever spoke up that they wanted this property changed. That is a commercial corridor in our city. Everything across the street from that is commercial, not residential of any form. So, when we want to downsize it and put duplexes, or one-story apartments or whatnot, it all has to be rezoned for property the city thought was commercial property, should be commercial property in our city. That's a commercial corridor to, to there. And like I say, everything across the street, from Hamilton Street, all the way to East Albert Street, is commercial property, not residential.
Any other comments? Thank you, I appreciate you.
Thanks.
Yep. Next, we'll move on to discussion and possible action on CSM for A and M Development. One oh four, one oh six Lake Road, one oh eight, one ten Lake Road, and one sixteen, one eighteen Lake Road.
So, we will bring this, uh, this is a series of three CSMs on Lake Road. This is the first one. And again, as the mayor indicated, they are for one oh four, one oh six, one oh eight, one ten, and one sixteen, one eighteen. So, um, these basically are being asked for approval, all three CSMs, because the developer, A and M Development, has built them as zero lotline duplexes. As you know, we did adopt the zero lotline duplex ordinance probably four or five years ago. And at A and M Development, was, that Matt is the principal of. And so, city staff, including the technical review committee, has reviewed all three CSMs. And they do comply with the city's zero lotline duplexes, including firewalls between the units and the separate utility connections for each parcel. So, city staff do recommend approval of all three CSMs. Our city attorney just reviewed this, and he has recommended that, as a contingency of approving these, that we do enter into basically a agreement that these will comply with the city code. But again, city staff do recommend approval of all three CSMs. Do you have any questions, Matt, certainly could answer.
Does anyone have any questions for Matt?
These are existing, like, you're happy.
Basically, they're, they're, this thing is a day, or, at some point, probably, you know, little family homes, uh, because you're together, passenger law, or, you know, those are, those are, yeah.
So, we all, Matt and his lovely wife, Dead of Thanks, because they're the impetus for us adapting the zero lotline duplex ordinance. Which provides a more affordable housing, instead of paying almost four hundred thousand for a new single-family home in Portage, there's substantial savings.
Any other questions? I'll make a motion to approve the CSMs for A and M Development at one oh four, one oh six Lake Road, one oh eight, one ten Lake Road, and one sixteen, one eighteen Lake Road. Thank, thank you, David. Any other questions, comments? Steve, will you call the roll, please?
Craig?
Hi.
Gunderson?
Hi.
Knackreiner?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Schneider? Motion carries.
Thank you. Discussion and possible action on CSM for Ruth Perkins, five oh eight East Conan Street, five oh nine East Conan Street. What an unusual situation we have here, Ruth.
Indeed. So, I think Ruth did a really great job at the, the public comments section. As Ruth indicated, this CSM delineates a new rear lotline boundary between her property at five oh eight East Conan Street, parcel seventy-seven dot A, and the parcel behind her parcel, owned by Richard Lynn at five oh nine East Cook Street. So, the CSM obviously adds territory to the adjoining rear parcel that would put the garage entirely on Mr. Lynn's property, which would eliminate the encroachment of the garage on her property. City staff has reviewed this and is recommending approval of it. Obviously, time is of the essence, is there a sale?
Yeah, well, we believe, as we talked about it, as the city staff, what we believe was the issue was that at one time, this was planned for an alley. So, what we're talking about is half of what used to be the alley that Ruth would like to give up to give over to Mr. Lynn, which I believe there's already a garage on, sitting there. So, this is where the problem came in, and unfortunately, when this was, garage was built, that the city did not catch this, at that point, that this was obviously built on someone else's property. So, we're just trying to clean it up for Ruth so she can sell her property. She's more than happy to give up that little half of an alley piece of land so that she can sell her property and, and move back to her hometown.
David?
Yep.
Motion to approve the CSM for Ruth Perkins at five oh eight East Conan Street and five oh nine East Cook Street.
Thank you. Matt? Got it? Any other questions, comments? Steve, call the roll, please.
Uh-huh, Craig?
Hi.
Gunderson?
Hi.
Knackreiner?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Schneider? Motion carries.
Good luck to you, Ruth, I hope you're really happy back with your move at your hometown. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Next, we'll do discussion and possible action on zoning designation for annex- Next, we'll do discussion and possible action on zoning designation for annexed parcels six one-one point one, six two-two point three, six two-three point oh-one, six two-three point oh-two, six two-three point oh-three, six two-three point four, six two-three point one-two, and six two-three point one-one, and six two-three point eight, and six two-three point six.
Exactly. So, the great news after many years of negotiation with parties, uh, these parcels are finally coming into the city and being annexed via a petition by the Portage Area Community School District, uh, that owns almost all of them. Uh, so, it's been a long time coming. Uh, the submittal has been, uh, really approved by the Department of Administration for the state of Wisconsin. Um, as part of this process, we must, uh, provide, um, preliminary zoning as they come into the city. Um, and so, uh, what did we look at? We looked at the comprehensive plan of what these future land uses would be. Um, and of course, if you look at the larger parcel, the former Schultz parcel, um, that is designated as, uh, commercial. So, we are recommending B-three interchange business for parcel six one-one point one. Um, and then the remaining parcels behind, which are adjacent, are designated in the comprehensive plan. The smaller, um, real narrow parcels are adjacent to, um, R-one neighborhood businesses. Those certainly could be developed, uh, as single-family lots in the future. So, the rest of them, um, as delineated, six twenty-two point zero-three through six twenty-three point six, uh, we recommend as R-one single-family. So, we're asking the plan commission, uh, to, um, approve, uh, the zoning designation uh, as we've, uh, outlined for these parcels.
Anyone with any questions or comments? The school is the one who put this petition together. Uh, they're the ones who bought up a- all of the property that we're talking about here, except for one, which I believe still is owned by Aspiris.
Yeah, that's correct.
Um, and Aspiris signed on to this too, so, uh, 'cause obviously you can't create an island. So, uh, it'd be nice to finally get this property within the city.
Zoning designation at this point in time, it's up to all of the school and...
Yes, very much so, absolutely.
Yup.
Who's gonna own the R-one?
Uh, the school district, yeah. That's the Schultz farm. Oh, I'm sorry, R-one, R-one is, those are all owned by the school district.
Aspiris is not gonna...
No, they just own one piece of parcel behind, um, the nursing home that's up there. They still have one little, one acre, I think it is, uh, piece of land. So, the, the school district, obviously, the school district bought, bought a lot of this property from Aspiris, but then they had to talk Aspiris into annexing that one section of land 'cause obviously, we can't create an island by annexing to the city, which, uh, Aspiris was more than happy to do for the school district. So, it's, uh, it's a great thing for, uh, the city of Portage to finally get this in here. A long time coming, so...
A long time. Many percent of the people in this city would have never realized that harm was not in Portage.
Ever.
Ever.
Well, none of that land out there was. None of that land on the north side was.
It's a long time coming.
Yup.
There's a couple more that should be annexed too.
Yeah, and, uh, and the thing about it is, uh, the city has, uh, tried for years and years and years to get this property annexed, and, uh, lo and behold, the school district is the one who got it done. So, kudos to them. So, I'll make a motion to, uh, approve zoning designation for annexed parcels six one-one point one through six two-three point six. Dennis?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Steve, will you call the roll, please?
Craig.
Hi.
Gunderson.
Hi.
Knackreiner.
Hi.
Paul.
Hi.
Schneider. Motion carries.
Thank you. And last but not least, presentation and discussion on concept plan for proposed multifamily development, the reserve at Duck Lake Estates preliminary plat, east Hardle Street, east Albert Street. Take it away, gentlemen.
Yeah, so, we'd like to bring up, um, Bob Murray, um, from P-three, who's leading the team here on this proposed multifamily development, um, that was designated, uh, last year as a preliminary plat for the reserve at Duck Lake that, uh, Mr. Growth Man had indicated. Um, so, we included both the preliminary plat, uh, and this. And we'll turn this around here.
And, uh, this is the same company that developed Rolling Woods, correct?
Oh, yeah. So, they're viewing this basically as the next phase or phase two of the, um, Rolling Woods, uh, multifamily development, which has thirteen buildings, which was developed about ten years ago, and which by any standard is one of our most successful,
Yup.
uh, multifamily. And it really, you've done a great job developing that, managing that. We don't have any police calls. It is just providing great market rate, affordable, and quality housing.
Yeah, I've been in a number of those apartments, uh, out there, and, uh, um, everybody that lives there enjoys living there. I mean, uh, like Steve, uh, I'll, uh, echo what Steve said. I think you guys did a great job out there, and, uh, um, it's been a huge success in our community, uh, from, uh, obviously, the people that you have renting there are very good, uh, reputable people because there are very, very few police calls to that establishment. So, we appreciate that.
Glad to hear that. It's a nice, it's a, it's a great project.
It is, it is.
So, I'm Bob Murray, and this is, uh, Josh Kennitzer. And we both work for Pre-three, which is a development company based out of Brookfield. And we develop in the state of Wisconsin, only in the state of Wisconsin is where we do developments. Um, like you said, Rolling Woods was, uh, it's a hundred and thirty-two units. And we develop, um, really, community residences, or we like to call them community homes, because, uh, we develop what's called low-density apartments. And what low-density means is, uh, we're not a three or four-story apartment building like you see, um, developed in, you know, around Madison area, and I guess proposed here. You know, those densities are about twenty up to thirty-five units per acre. And we do low-density, which means that our density maxes out around eight units per acre. In this particular project, I think it's like five point six units per acre. So, to put that in perspective, a typical city lot is one-fifth of an acre. And so, if you did five duplexes in the city, that density, uh, would be, um, ten units per acre. So, it's, it's less density than what a duplex would be typically. And we call them community residences or community homes because, uh, we designed them to really act like a home for somebody. And what we mean by that is, uh, we don't have thirty or seventy-unit apartment projects. Ours are twelve units. And the community home, I guess, starts as you drive into it. You've been through, uh, Rolling Woods before, and it's, uh, it's spacious. It's spaced out, and it feels nice. There's vegetation, the grass is green, there's trees. Um, that's probably the first part of it, and then it goes from there. So, then when you get to your unit, and I'll show you what it looks like. As you get to a property, um, everybody has their own private garage. When you get to your own private garage, uh, and you close the door, um, it is connected right to your unit, which we call a private entrance. So, you're not walking down a hallway and hearing what Mary's, or hear what Mary's cooking or what Bob is burning. And even if you're in the upstairs unit, you go through a door, and it's a staircase right to your own unit. And then, as you walk up the stairs, um, units are the units, and you have, you know, luxury... LVP flooring, which is the exact same flooring you have if you bought a brand-new house today anywhere in Portage or Baraboo or wherever else. Our kitchens are white, chicaned cabinets, all stainless steel. Um, we have full-size dishwashers, uh, garbage disposals. Every unit has its own private balcony. It has full-size washer-dryers, not like a small stackable one. Um, each bedroom has a dedicated, uh, full bath, so you don't have to share a bathroom with, if you have a roommate. And, uh, and then the main bedroom has a huge walk-in closet, bigger than I have in my house, that's for sure. So, what we find is that when you give people privacy, they treat it like their home. And we own a lot of properties around the United States. And the stuff outside of Wisconsin, we didn't develop. So, we own properties that are, you know, two, three stories with a common hallway. Um, and when you have properties like that, people don't treat them as their homes. And so, typically, what you'd see in a pro, the average resident across America moves every once, uh, one to every three years. In these properties, we find that people live there on average three to five years. And... Every community wants single-family homes, and they should. Every family wants homeowners, and they should. That's the goal of a community, is to get more homeowners. There's a way to become a homeowner, and it doesn't start out by going from high school or college and buying it a home. But it probably starts out, people go to college and they, they buy, they go, or get out of high school, and they, they live in a inexpensive apartment, the cheapest they can find. Eventually, they get to a point in life where they're, start thinking about, you know what? I want something that's a little bit nicer. And their teachers, and their nurses, and their doctors, and their firefighters, and even, even your factory workers, anybody making eighteen, two people making eighteen dollars an hour, uh, can live in a really nice apartment. And that's what we design for people, is that this is a transition for some of them, where they will move in here, a lot of them, and they'll become the future homeowners. They will transition to a home. You also find in the first level, um, find a lot of people that live in a community that just are sick of owning, because they're getting older, they've owned the house for forty years, there's a ton of repairs, they're sick of shoveling, they're sick of doing the landscaping, and they wanna move. But there's really, they don't wanna move into someplace that feels like a downgrade to them. And so, we offer something that's, it's almost eleven hundred square feet that they can move into. It's clean, it's modern, it's safe, and it feels like their own home. So, it allows them an opportunity to sell their home, which opens it up to a younger couple of kids to move into the community. And that's what we focus on trying to, to build. And I think that's what you'll see with the other projects that we've done. And that's, we do them all over Wisconsin. So, our particular development would be eighty-four units. And I, do you guys have a site plan?
Um, it's up on the board, yup.
So, we try to make it, you know, nice and spacious, you know? It's hard to tell when you look at a site plan, but go through, uh, Rolling Woods, but a lot of green space in the middle. Another thing to point out is, as you enter, we have a leasing office, because we think it's important to have onsite managers. And it shows in our projects. A lot of developers don't believe in onsite managers, but you kinda need a mother hen there to, to keep people accountable. So, you'll see of an office right when you go in there. That's actually a large, it's, it's hard to imagine what it looks like on there, but that's a pretty large, and I don't know how many acres that is, green space in the middle. And we believe in landscaping and irrigation, where it's, it's nice and green. So, every community's reaching out to us, most communities, almost every community's reaching out and says, "We need housing." The reason they need housing, because if you own a factory and you wanna bring more employees in here, the first thing people ask is, "Where am I gonna live?" And right now, there's a huge housing crisis. And if you wanna buy a house, let's say you wanna buy a starter home, and I don't think you can find a starter home for less than three hundred fifty thousand dollars, probably four, more like four hundred thousand dollars for a starter home. If you take your taxes, three thousand dollars a month to live there, okay? Now, are we even gonna charge twelve hundred a month here? No. Six years ago, absolutely. It was, building costs were getting up forty percent since twenty, or since twenty-twenty, and our interest rates have doubled. So, just the, uh, the increasing cost and the loan amount, and beyond that, we gotta put on more money than we ever did before, uh, even to do a development. It's risen the cost of rent to a level that is unaffordable in almost any community, unless you're in the, in the city of Madison or the city of Milwaukee, or really, the first ring of, of people around that. And what we've done is we found, we, we build this, this twelve unit. We've been building it for years. We've been around for forty years, and we keep fine-tuning it. And, uh, because we build the same thing over and over again, we know how many nails it takes and how many screws it takes. And so, you get the cost down as low as you can. But even as low as the cost, we've gotten it down, um, it, it doesn't work just as, as that. And I know even somebody else mentioned before, where you'd be asking for TIF. Absolutely, absolutely be asking for TIF. And not because we wanna make a lot of money, 'cause even with the TIF, even if you gave us as much TIF as you possibly could, if you gave us every single dollar of increment until the end of the TID, I can tell you, it still wouldn't be a very profitable venture. But all we're trying to do is, is trying to get in situations where we can at least offer rent to two individuals that make eighteen dollars an hour that the government says would be affordable. And that, and that's really what we can do. And the only thing the city can do to help us out is with taxes. In a tax bill, on a, if you look at your rent every month, your tax bill, the taxes for this, about two hundred fifty dollars of the rent would be, would go towards taxes. And so, all we can do is ask for some relief on taxes for a while, to appease our banks a long enough period of time, where we can say, "All right, this is gonna regenerate this much income for the next ten years, would you lend us the money on it?" 'Cause without it, we'd have to put so much money down, it would be impossible to do. But we do, we consider them actually more like, you know, they're apartment communities, but really, what they're farms. And their farms, what we're farming is, you know, future homeowners. 'Cause there's, like I said, three to five years, people typically live in a residence like this. Um, a lot of those people are gonna leave to buy homes. And if you, I haven't done a study on Portage, but if you have, we've seen them in a lot of other cities, you'd be amazed how many people work in Portage and don't live in Portage. I bet you it's in the thousands.
Seventeen hundred a day.
Yeah, no.
Yeah.
We're a huge jobs magnet, and we have done a very bad job in the past of providing quality, affordable housing, um, until now.
Yeah.
I think we're on a roll now, I think we do.
And I know t- traffic is always a big issue, and I know that was brought up, so I looked up. There's traffic studies in, in, um, Hardle Street, it was Albert Street, right? Turns out, I mean, does that feel like it's gotten busier in the last five, six years? All right.
Do you think?
Okay. The traffic from twenty, the last thing they did a traffic study was twenty-seventeen. So, that's a long time ago, and the traffic's a lot less. The, the traffic counts was thirty-six hundred cars per day, thirty-six hundred. So, assuming that traffic counts are higher, but let's assume they didn't go higher, we have eighty-four units. And if everybody did two trips a day, which is not gonna happen, you're looking at less than a five percent increase in traffic. But I understand that traffic is always a, is a big issue, and that's why I wanted to look it up. It's less of an issue than you think. I mean, go to Rolling Woods and sit outside there and count cars all day. You'll be so bored by nine o'clock, you're gonna be like, go to the coffee shop to get coffee to start counting again. Um, the traffic is never as bad as it is. But that being said, we're looking for something of very low density, and we're looking to bring residents into Portage that probably love to live in Portage, but there's nothing that they wanna live in. And, uh, and new is new. I mean, you know, really, it's great. It's still ten years old. It's, it's, this is still gonna feel, even, is gonna feel more, you know, modern. I mean, it's like a ten-year-old car versus a brand-new car. It will bring in new residents to Portage that otherwise wouldn't live there because there's nothing in Portage that they wanna live in. Not that Portage is a bad town. It's just some people just, if they have an option for something brand-new fifteen minutes away, and they wanna live in brand-new, that's where they'll go. So, eighty-four units, I mean, I can tell you, Rolling Woods, we've owned it for, well, we've managed, we built it ten years ago, and I just looked up the occupancy in the last year and a half. It's, it's always full.
There's a waiting list.
Um, you know, I, every month, it's like ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent. I mean, you can't never be a hundred percent all year, 'cause sometimes you gotta, you know, clean it. So, we're just here today to see if, if you would, you know, be supportive of, you know, new apartment homes to help attract, you know, really good residents. And you really are gonna attract future homeowners. Um, so, that's, that's why we wanted to hear, and we appreciate you guys, uh, listening and, um, we're here to answer any questions you may have.
Anyone have any questions?
Does that map go down further, Steve?
Uh, yeah. There you go.
So, I assume, this is the city lot.
Okay.
That's the city, the city blocks, that's what the city is?
I believe so.
I think so, yup.
Huh?
Yes, yes.
So, then, this is my property.
Yup, yup.
Okay. I have a slight concern, and I see your entrance into there, you're ready for East Albert Street.
Right. Right.
I'm I'm really concerned, you know, because like you said, the traffic. And if you come into East Albert and go around there, you avoid the stoplights. And one solution would be put stoplights on East Albert Street.
Right. But you can't avoid them then.
I mean, we're all on board with, uh, Jim Growth Man putting up fifty-five single.
Yeah, no, I'm not against the property mayor, not, and and I'm not against what he's trying to do, but there's some problems there, is what I'm saying, that we need to look at. Because especially entrance being so close to East Albert Street. You know, and and I'm just telling you, they come up, they come from the, from the east.
I never go down Hartle Street, I always go down Albert.
Oh, absolutely, everybody does.
That's where I drove on.
And and the problem with it is, is because a hundred years ago, when them businesses were built, they let us build into the right-of-way. You know, and I mean, where we park in the front of our building is right in the right-of-way. You you know, and my concern is that if this gets bad, the city doesn't come and say, there ain't going to be no parking in the front anymore. You know, that is.
Well, just ask your son to move the building back.
Yeah. That property there from on East Albert all the way out to New Pine Ridge.
Yeah.
That's the oldest industrial park there is in the city of Portage. That's what that used to be. But developed as such, and now we all deal with it, you you know, but that's, I have that concern of of the traffic that you're going to create because it's bad now. And by putting more traffic out there doesn't make it better. It only makes it worse. Oh, that. Again, I'm not against the project. I know that we put, we go, we are going to have them same exact concerns if them are all single-family.
Yep.
Exactly the same concerns. Whenever you put more cars out on there, because you avoid that stoplight, East Hartle and New Pine Ridge. And that's why people, why do you take East Albert?
That's just because when I.
It's.
There was no East Hartle when I was growing up driving, so that's, I always went on Albert Street.
And it's happened.
Yeah.
But the the concern is, you have to back out away from my building.
And and it's not just yours, it's not just yours, it's other business.
Oh, it's just all of us, all of us that park in the front of our buildings, you know. As far as my employees with their trucks, they never back out, they always are driving. They're on the side of the building, you know, in the front of the building. But otherwise, everybody's got that same, that same problem, and we're. Yeah.
Just mobilizing on that street.
He's going to be right next to me.
Yep.
He's going to do anything, is I don't think you've got any parking in front of your building, only got it on the side.
Yep.
Uh, so that is that's a concern I have for the city. But that concern doesn't go away if we just let single-family residents go in. Same concern.
What's your target rent for a two-bedroom?
Target rent here probably be around sixteen fifty to seventeen hundred.
Uh, no, it was rezoned, uh, when Mr. Growth Man was going to develop it as a single-family plat to RT. So we'll have to rezone it, so that'll be a process. Yep, yeah. So it is planned to be residential, it's owned RT, we'll have to rezone it to, uh, R four, R five. And just amend the plat.
Bring up the same stuff.
So, yeah, so it will be, uh, because of the density, uh, does not need a PUD, it'll just be a single site plan approval, so. Much less, the density makes a world of difference, location makes a world of difference. And I will say the fact that P three premier has been here with Rolling Woods, in my opinion, makes a huge difference.
Yeah, for.
The quality housing now.
For for me, for me personally, I I I am, I'm total supporter of this project, I think it'd be a great addition to our city, something that we desperately need. Um, we've heard nothing from anyone that lives out there, any complaints or anything about this project moving forward. Um, so for me personally, I'm totally in favor of this project.
Similar site? This is basically what the site.
No, he's not, he's not, uh.
We have an early contract from him.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. We 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 have the property under contract from him, so.
Yep.
He's been very, I mean, he, we welcome you to talk to him about what we've been like to deal with so far. So, I mean, we welcome that.
Well, we all know Jim really well, but because of, Jim decided not to move forward with this project, well, one, because these people approached him, but the big reason for Jim is that because of his age. You know, I mean, he's in the TID district, so for him to ever recoup his money, it would be a project that he would be doing for his kids rather than himself. So, um, so he just thought that this would be a better fit and a better thing for the city to move forward with, because these folks plan on putting it up right away. I mean, it could be ten years or longer before the fifty-five, uh, lots are sold at, uh, the Duck Lake Reserve, so, um, that's why, uh, Jim got in agreement with these gentlemen, and, uh, that's why I'm, I mean, just based on their, uh, project they already have here in the city of Portage and how successful it is and how well it's managed. Um, from all aspects, I mean, I think this would be a great addition to our community. I understand about the traffic problem, but that's more of a city problem to figure out and not your problem to figure out.
Yeah, well, yeah, we'll do pay-go.
That's all the city does.
And that's what most cities do.
Yep. Just, yeah, just to say, just like we did with the other one, to see if you're, uh, in support of this.
Yeah, they're two-story, yep.
David?
Oh, thank you.
I don't think you have many different opportunities of, uh, changing your address.
Right. Yeah.
Selling the lot on the other side.
Oh, yes, I'm talking the city of Ireland.
Egress, shooting out the other side.
Wasn't that turned over to Jim, though?
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. Yeah, because we did some land swapping there.
Well, we actually didn't even swap at the time, we just give it to him.
Yeah.
Give it to him for fifty dollars or something like that. He wanted to swap, and we wouldn't swap because he was going to give us more, some more marshes.
No, you're right. I'm looking at the property records right here, there's a lot right there that's city Portage right on Dorothy Drive.
But we give that all to Growth Man. Yep, city don't own nothing other than that lot right next to it.
You guys, you guys own a big site.
That is an unsalable lot.
Twenty-four, thirty-eight B, yeah. Yeah, but, yeah, you're right, that's. I think it's.
It's all wetland too.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we gave to Jim, right? That wouldn't be smarter to try to make your entrance way up there?
Well, I think that's wetland.
Yes.
So I don't know what the, uh, how we're going to get through the DNR to to get wetland out there. Those cars are still going to end up in the same spot, right?
David? About, are you in favor of this project or not in favor or uncommitted or?
Well, I think one of the other things that's going to alleviate some of the traffic concerns is if you roll the first, it's a big, small, that's people will turn down the handle, take it down to that other town.
Correct.
Because they'll be able to go all the way around.
Good point, I mean, there will be some.
Yep.
Yeah, I like, I.
I don't think because I think a lot of the traffic on East Albert isn't even residents of the city of Portage.
That's what I think too.
They're they're just coming, they're they're coming off of thirty-three, and it's the way for them to get to the other end of Portage.
So they don't have to get through town.
That that's exactly right, now, you might get some of them that'll go up Hamilton Street, because then they can get onto the, you know, on thirty-nine, but.
Going through, going down to Walmart, right, in that area of town, you're going to have a second avenue that will help to the stoplight and taking your right, and then you can go down this way.
There's probably some of that.
And go down to Tractor Supply and go down to the party, everything else over there.
It, that helps.
That's all I'm saying, is there would be some traffic that will be alleviated by having a.
But I don't think the traffic coming up on East Albert Street that comes by our shop.
No.
If they're going to Walmart in that, then they stay on East Hartle.
Right, they're going to stoplights.
It's the people that want to get to the other side of town or go downtown, they go up to East Hartle Street now. What did alleviate some of that traffic was closing your school. That alleviated some of that, took some of that traffic off there in the morning and afternoon. But, uh, it's, it's just a problem that's got to be dealt with, but we didn't let any of them go.
Yeah.
You know.
I hate to say it, but increased traffic is a good problem to have, in the big picture.
So, uh, generally, you would support this project?
Yes.
Matt?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
As hopefully the next mayor of the city of Portage, you would be in favor of this?
Yeah. Well, we we need growth, and I think, uh, I I used to live next to Rolling Woods, great complex, didn't have a lot of, you know, anything, so like this is, um, everything I've known from Rolling Woods, really nice, and it's the same company, I'm fully confident. Great. We really appreciate it, thanks for your time, and.
Well, thank you for you guys' time.
We'll go on the next, we'll go on the next step.
Thank you for investing in the city of Portage, we really appreciate it.
It's going to be great, I mean, we're excited for it, so.
We are too.
You know, cities, every city needs it, and the ones that are, find a way to do it are going to really do it. At every, there's not many developers that can develop it, willing to do it.
Right.
We think it's going to be great, we think it's going to be really successful.
I've got a question for you.
Yeah.
Not related to this project.
Yeah.
Mentioned in the project prior to on East Albert, you mentioned it, and you hear it all the time. We need affordable housing. Explain to me what is affordable housing? What, where's that dollar figure that you consider to be affordable?
Yeah, okay, I mean, I'll tell you, so, um, there's different levels of affordable housing. So there actually is something called section forty-two, which is affordable housing by definition, and we own a lot of it around the United States. We we manage about five thousand units of affordable housing. What true affordable how, the word affordable housing means anybody that makes sixty percent or less of the median household income. And those individuals, um, are taken care of very well because the federal government steps in and allows you to build what's called section two, section forty-two housing. You heard of section eight, but section forty-two, where they give you a lot of tax credits to build, and then once you build, you cannot charge more than X amount of rent. So every year they come out and say, a two-bedroom can't be more than eleven hundred bucks, whatever it is. That's that's true of affordable housing. Then you have a step up, which is called workforce housing. Workforce housing is people generally make between eighty percent and a hundred and twenty percent of the median household income. That population, uh, is never serviced very well. Because the new residents, the new stuff being built, in fact, most, most of the time in a community aside is, you'll find that what's being built is section forty-two, and you'll see it, and it's really expensive. It is, the cost, we've seen the cost, it costs them about fifty percent, fifty percent more per unit than what ours cost. Okay? And ours is nice, it's just the bureaucracy of it. Nobody is building anything from people that are making eighty percent to a hundred and twenty percent. Because you just can't, it's not a, you just can't build it and charge those rents. You can't build this and charge fourteen hundred, I can't build this and charge fifteen hundred rents. In fact, if there is, like I said before, if there is no help, the break-even rent would be about nineteen hundred dollars. Okay? So to make things, I, to illustrate things a little bit better, if you look at your rent and figure out what goes into a break-even rent. So your rent, your mortgage is going to be about, just under eleven hundred dollars of your rent is going to go towards the mortgage. And that assumes that we're putting thirty percent down in cash, so the loan's seventy percent, right? That used to be eighty percent or even eighty-five percent. Now it's seventy percent of loans, so that means you got to come up with thirty percent of cash versus fifteen in the past. You know, so that's number one. So you have that, then you have your operating expenses, your managers, your lawn care, your snow plowing, your insurance, all that kind of stuff, that's about four hundred dollars. Now you're almost up to fifteen hundred dollars, okay? Then you have, you're never going to be full all the time, you're going to have about five percent vacancy, so eighty bucks goes to fill towards the the units that are going to be partially vacant. So you have eighty bucks there. Then what else am I missing here? Uh, the real estate taxes, so the real estate taxes, probably about two hundred fifty dollars a month in rent. All right? And then you're not going to be able to develop anything and make less than what they could invest in a US Treasury at four and a half percent for. So this is assuming you just want to make your, you want to take your money and put it in an apartment building versus putting it in a US Treasury, that's going to be about two hundred and seventy-five bucks. You know, add all all that up, it it usually ends up being between nineteen hundred and two thousand dollars a month. Doesn't work. So if it's nineteen hundred, we try to get to a point where we try to get to seventeen hundred dollars. Because that's, if people make eighteen dollars an hour, affordable rent is considered thirty percent of your gross income. So if two people make eighteen dollars an hour and you're making seventy-six thousand, I'm throwing out a lot of numbers here. That's eighteen hundred dollars a month, okay? But you also have to remember, you're got to pay for, you know, utilities and stuff, so seventeen hundred dollars, in our mind, appears, you know, typically affordable rent for a two-bedroom for two people making eighteen dollars an hour, eighteen dollars an hour. That's what we, that's what we strive for. So that's what we call the numbers, we know two thousand's will work. We manage two hundred and sixty-five properties around America, around the United States. We have maybe two properties that have rents that are over two thousand. To get those rents, you need to be the first ring around of Madison, and to get there, the land's so expensive, you have to do high, uh, density, which typically, when you see three-story, this one didn't have it, I don't know why they didn't have it, it has underground parking. You don't, I mean, you can't have that many units in a field of, I mean, it's looked like a shopping center, I mean, they just, they just, they missed on the design significantly. But three-story's not bad, it's because some cities need more density, we got it, but you got to put underground parking, you can't, you can't park on the surface there. Um, but most people like to have, you know, they want to develop around the second ring, they want to develop these three-story, a lot of glass, and, um, we pride ourselves in building really nice housing for, you know, the the typical American worker. We have doctors in our places, it's not, it's this and, this isn't, you know, people that are the average, um, but we like what we build, we know that they're really easy to manage, because people stay there for a long time, they take care of them, we take care of them. I mean, if it's our choice to own stuff, we'd only own this stuff, but, um, but we own a lot of stuff because we like, we like to do a lot of deals.
Eve, what is the median income in Portage, eighty-three thousand per family of four?
Uh, per family of four, that's correct, yeah.
You're talking, you're talking about fifty thousand dollars. No, for that, you're talking the median income, sixty percent of the median income, talking fifty thousand dollars. What does it cost to build a single-story or, I don't care, single-story house, fourteen hundred square feet? A hundred and fifty, can you build one for a hundred and fifty dollars a square foot? No.
Now with landscaping and, it's three hundred fifty thousand.
Fifty dollars a square foot, just let's use that figure. You're talking four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and you still have to buy the lot. Yeah, you're talking over three hundred thousand dollars. And.
It's a starter home nowadays.
That's a starter home, and and they're saying, and you're going to make fifty thousand dollars a year. I'm telling you, it ain't in the books. You can't do it, it's impossible to do. And that that's where I led to my question, is they all talk about affordable housing. Give me a dollar, what you think affordable housing is, because I'm going to tell you, like you say, three hundred thousand dollars anymore doesn't get you much, you know.
You're talking a tiny house for three hundred.
You look at what what the schoolhouse last year sold for, and it was a very nice house, but it didn't have high-end finishes in it, but it didn't have low-end either. I mean, it it was a very nice house, but you look at the square footage in that, I've said that the neighbors, the neighbors will sleep closer to your wife than you do. You know, it's that close to the next lot. You know, and it it it's unbelievable, and I say. You know, and it it it's unbelievable and I say and that leads back to you guys, and if you can put them in something that's eleven hundred square feet for seventeen hundred dollars a month, they, you can't afford to own. But but I also do believe, unlike what you said, I don't believe the young people are that excited about owning a house anymore.
Oh, they're not.
They don't want to take care of nothing. They 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 want to move in, they want to move in, they want somebody to mow their grass, shovel their sidewalk. They don't want to do, because they got too many irons in the fire, that they don't, and I, you know, I have nieces and nephews that live in apartments in DeForest and Madison and whatnot. And I said, you know, are you saving for a house? No, they have no interest in buying a house. They would, you know, rent goes up, it just goes up, you know, because they don't, but when you stop and think about all the expenses that come with owning a home. I'm telling you, they they can't afford to own a home anymore, I mean, you got to have, and you know, the city of Portage, for the most part, doesn't have a terrific amount of high paying jobs. We got a lot of mid-level jobs. And whatnot, but we don't, you know, you get us away from the hospital, get them employees out of there. We don't have a lot of high paying jobs, you know, the hospital and the plumbers.
Well, not plumbers, that's when he owns his business as a plumber, that's why he said that.
They seem to be high paying jobs. But no, it's, that's, like I say, everybody talks, we need more affordable housing. I agree.
This is, this is, for market rate housing, this is as affordable as you can get.
Yeah.
You you can't, you can't do it, I mean, we've.
And they're not an owner.
And they're not an owner.
And they're not an owner.
We, but we still give them a nice uh product though, I mean, we're not, this is, this is not a, I mean, these are double walls, you know, soundproofing and LVP, it's I mean, it's actually nice stuff.
It's just like Rolling Woods, I mean, that's a very nice complex, I mean, I can't compliment you guys enough on that project, I mean, it's been a great asset to this community.
What the hell is affordable housing? Yeah, and I'd say that's as affordable as there is. Or a three bedroom, two bath with a full basement. It's it's a two car garage, that's as affordable as we've got in the city of Portage.
Yep.
Anywhere, I don't care, it doesn't cost any less to develop in Fox Lake than does in Portage, it's just, you know, it costs so much, the roads are expensive.
If uh if no one objects, I'm going to let David make a motion to adjourn because Mr. Livingston would like to get home to his family.
I just hear that.
Dave, thank you, all in favor, say aye, aye.